Okay, we're gonna start streaming. I will call the Southbury Joint Meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, special meeting to order at 7:03. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is a discussion and action on a resolution to reallocate the appropriation of 2.1 million, from which was assigned to the purchase of Edgewood Bath and Tennis Club to the Ballentine Pool Project. Do we have a discussion on that with the Board of Selectmen?
This is the allocation from a couple of years ago that was in the budget that hasn't lapsed for the Edgewood purchase that we're just reassigning. It's like earmarked in the general fund that we're just reassigning it to the pool project at Ballentine?
Yes.
Yes. Betsy, do we have a resolution? All right, so I look for a motion resolved that the Southbury Board of Selectmen and the Southbury Board of Finance hereby approves reallocating the appropriation of 2.1 million, which was assigned to the purchase of Edgewood Bath and Tennis Club to the Ballentine Pool Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance authorize an expenditure of $170,000 for bids and specifications of Ballentine Pool Project, which is a 5% estimated cost of the $3.4 million for the project. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby sets the date of Thursday, March 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in room 205 of the town hall to act upon the above resolution. Do I have a motion from the Board of Selectmen? Justin Betty has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
John Deal has seconded it. On the Board of Selectmen's side, any further discussion on this?
I'll just note, by way of background, for the public's benefit who may be paying attention to this meeting, but not necessarily, just for the public's benefit who may be paying attention to our regular meeting, but not necessarily our budget meetings, this was an extensive discussion that we had last week with our consultants and that prepared various cost estimates and whatnot, and a timeline was developed on how to proceed with the project, which led to this joint meeting having to happen tonight, which I think others can explain better as to why, to get this approved and the ball rolling so we could have a town meeting in two weeks. So there may be a lack of intense discussion this evening because every person around this table has already exhaustively discussed this matter. I just want to make that point.
And the hopes is by moving along with this timeline is that our goal, and I want to clarify this and caution people, our goal is, if it's at all possible to get everything done, is to break ground at the end of the summer and minimize what we might miss in the pool season. If the plan is aligned, if the winter construction season is like it was this year, it's possible to do. However, it's not unexpected that we may miss a summer season. I just want to caution the public, and we're trying to do the best we can to do that, and we need to get the bids and specs and things moving, and we need to authorize money to do that. Okay, anything else with the Board of Selectmen? I'll call the Board of Selectmen vote. If all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, and it carries on the Board of Selectmen's side. I will refer to the Chair of the Board of Finance.
Motion from the Board of Finance to approve the three resolutions?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Kathy. Any further discussion, questions? If not, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Abstaining, none. Unanimous, carried.
Okay, so thank you, John. That means that we will set notifications out for a special town meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 16th, 2023. Of course, the public has to act on the appropriations, so the public is invited to come to the town meeting and vote on the appropriation. Okay. We can adjourn. A motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned from the special meeting. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Appreciate your coming out. Okay. That one bad? Okay, I will call to order the regular Southbury Board of Selectmen meeting, March 2nd, 2023. I will call it to order at 7:09 PM. We can do the Pledge of Allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have a presentation by the Arts and Culture Committee. You can come on up, and we'll turn one of these on, and you can get the, just go ahead and push a button. When it turns green.
So I am the Chair of the Economic Development Commission, and we have developed a new subcommittee, which is our Arts and Culture Subcommittee. We have Kelly Keenan, who is the Chair. We have Kim O'Neil, who is our Vice Chair. We have five regular members, and we're looking for an alternate. And I'm gonna turn it over to the girls to discuss what we've done and what we're looking forward to doing.
Okay. So first, thank you so much for having us come to your meeting tonight. We'd love to give you an update on what we've been working on for the last six months and what we've got on the docket for 2023. So in addition to a number of projects, we've also been working really hard over the last six months to establish relationships in the town with various arts and culture businesses and people to start strengthening those relationships. And we've also been working on establishing ourselves as a subcommittee as a resource to the community if they're looking for any arts and culture-related guidance as far as grants, finding musicians, knowing what's going on in the town. We put out a really robust calendar every month that shows every arts and culture thing that's happening in Southbury for that month. So that's part of it. You all have this little information packet. So we'll start with, one of the things that we've been working on since July is we've been putting out a monthly newsletter called The Maker's Spotlight. And what this does is it features Southbury artists, artisans, craftspeople in the town who are small businesses. I do a little interview with them, and then we roll this out as a newsletter through the Economic Development Commission. We also promote it on social media. And this has been going on since July, so you have July through March. And I actually just finished the March Maker Spotlight, which is a special edition celebrating the 350th. And I got to interview David Merrill, who was the muralist who did the town hall mural. And he gave a really lovely interview, and so I'm excited to share that with you this evening. Let's see, what else is in this packet? So the whole purpose of The Maker's Spotlight, again, is to give a platform to people who don't necessarily have a brick-and-mortar business to sell their wares and promote their goods. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community, but also from the makers themselves. I wanted to share this quote from one of the people who we featured recently. She says, "We think what the town is doing is awesome. While they may not have a physical retail location, our town is recognizing talent, value, and is actively promoting all small business." So that's what we want to hear, and that's why we're doing this. You got anything to add to that?
No.
So last September, our first actual project was the chalk walk, which happened right outside town hall. So we provided a bunch of kids with chalk and kind of a theme, and they came on a beautiful sunny Saturday and decorated the sidewalk with these really adorable drawings. We had surprisingly good participation for it being a first-out-of-the-gate event. I think we ended up having about 50 kids show up and decorate the sidewalk. Yeah, it was really, it was really cool to see all the different designs, which was a lovely, kind of low-cost, community-friendly event. We participated in the Snow and Ice Festival last, about last month? The coldest day of the year. So we were in this room doing arts and crafts, face painting, which was really fun. And then we also just rolled out two projects, two bigger projects that are related to the 350th. So the first one you all have a flyer for, which is something we rolled out in January, is a community quilt project. We've been working closely with this incredibly talented community of quilters that Southbury has, and we're calling for residents to contribute a 10-by-10 square, which we will assemble and present at the end of the year. The theme of this quilt is Home Sweet Home Southbury, and so your design has to kind of represent what it means for you to live in this town. And then we have, we're gonna be doing workshops with the Southford Falls Quilt Guild at the library, in case you don't know how to quilt, like myself. And we hope that at the end of the year, we're able to put together a really dynamic, beautiful representation of what this community is through a quilt. The other project that we recently rolled out is similar to the quilt project. It's a community cookbook. One of the ways that I like to build relationships is through food, and I think we also have a large amount of talented home chefs in Southbury. So it's the same concept. We're calling on people in the community to share a favorite family recipe, a little story behind why it is a favorite family recipe. And again, we'll be assembling that at the end of the year and presenting it as part of the 350th celebration.
I think the only thing I would clarify is, for the quilt square, it's any kind of textile art. It does not, you do not have to be a master quilter to participate. You can embroider, cross-stitch, applique. There's a whole bunch of ways that anybody could add their flavor to it.
Right, and we rolled that, we introduced that in January. We already have 30 people who've signed up. We are distributing blank 10-inch-by-10-inch cotton squares for people to kind of have like a blank canvas to start on. But the response has been great. We have residents at the Southbury Training School who are gonna participate, all the way up to like professional quilters. So it should be really interesting what we get at the end of the day.
Do you have enough quilt squares? I know it takes a certain amount to make a certain size.
Yeah, yeah. I think we'll have more than enough. And we have contingency plans in place in case we get a lot. So we'll figure out.
We have too many.
We can do front and back. We'll figure something out. But we're really looking forward to seeing the squares start to roll in and seeing what people come up with, because I think it's a really interesting form of art. And then we have, you know, a couple of other, well, we have a special project each month. I won't go into detail on all of them. I think you all have the... Oh, yeah.
That's the most important, I think, that we're gonna roll out.
So next month, we're kind of steering away from arts and crafts, and we're focusing on business development. So if you're a local artist or a maker who's looking at taking the next step from going from a hobbyist into actually having a small business, what are the questions that you have to ask yourself? What's the paperwork that you have to do? So we're trying to put together a resource guide and help people connect the dots to see, one, are they ready to make that next step, because it is a big step? And then how can we help facilitate their success in the community? So that's what March is gonna focus on. And then quickly, in April, we're going to be looking at what we can do as an Arts and Culture Subcommittee to help with the Sustainable CT Initiative, getting Southbury its Silver Certification. A big chunk of what Section 4 of that involves is arts and culture-related, like creating a cultural map for your community, establishing an arts or a historic district or an arts district, little things like that that we think that we can help contribute to. Yeah.
So as you can see, that's why these two are such a valuable asset to our commission right now. We are happy to have them join us, and they're newbies. They've been here about six or eight months.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's any questions, I know I probably talked way too fast.
No, that's okay. I think there's a lot going on, and I appreciate your work. I think the Board would certainly appreciate your work and what has come so quickly, especially given our 350th anniversary. And this is, the nice thing about this is it's definitely directly working with the community and with our citizens, which is nice. And I think that enhances the whole overall feel of, you know, our citizens are always happy and proud of what happens here in Southbury. And I think it gets, it'll help with economic development, because it'll raise awareness of what Southbury is and what it's about. So anybody else from the Board?
It'll also raise awareness of how talented this town is. It's very talented. The residents of this town are amazing, so.
I just wanted to thank you all for your time, because I know as volunteers, you know, you have to have a lot of passion to do something like this and to just kick it off and get it going. And so I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize that what you're doing is good for the residents and good for the town, and it's just very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you all, thank you for being here tonight, and I just want to echo that. And I just feel like your group, in the limited time that it's been around, has been very visible. Like you're at the town events, you're doing stuff for the kids, you have the newsletter. It's great. And I think we're all excited to see like what the year is going to bring in this regard. I think it's great for our community, so thank you for your efforts.
Thankfully, the ice didn't melt either.
It was the perfect day.
But thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is public comment. If you have any public comment you'd like to make, limit it to two minutes. If you'd like to come up, let us know who you are and where you live, and public comment. You'll have to push a button.
Hi, Michael Carrington, 76 Resfort Road. I just wanted to come tonight to talk a little bit about the pool and the importance of the heating element. I know my two children have taken swim lessons there. It's been wonderful, but it has been very cold. We also used to have a pool pass. And, you know, even if it was a nice day, unless it was a very hot day where the sun had been warming up the pool, sometimes we would skip out. I think that the heating element, yeah, it'll cost a little extra money, but I think it's gonna get a lot more use out of the pool. I think it'll pay for itself with additional memberships, day passes, and swimming lessons. I think we've got a great parks and rec department, and I think we should give them all the tools they need to succeed. So when you guys consider the pool, I think that's a really important thing. I don't think we need to make it the Ritz, the creme de la creme, but I do think the pool heating element is really important. If we're gonna do Ballentine, I think we should do it right, and I appreciate all the time and work you're putting into it. So I want you to keep in mind the importance of that heated pool for all the people to use, particularly the kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Don't be bashful. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is announcements and correspondence, which you have in front of yourself, in front of you, sorry. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove the RTC appointment recommendations and add it to new business.
There's a motion to remove, do we have a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on the removing of the recommendation from the SRTC from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that carries.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it carries. Referral from Land use, Planning Commission, 8-24, referral for pickleball courts. Just to let you know, this is, we need to vote to approve the location. It's been referred to, planning, they've given a letter of approval. What we discovered was, when you play pickleball, I don't play pickleball, they say you need four courts. And it's how they rotate and the tournament, and someone brought it to our attention, so we had to look for another location. So the idea is to bring it into Ballentine, the pad to be raised, move the volleyball, and get our correct pickleball setup. The good thing is, we can probably get going. The weather's been pretty good. There's not frost in the ground once the snow leaves, and we have material to start getting that done as soon as we give the approval. So is there a resolution on that? We have a motion to approve, resolve that the Southbury Board of Selectmen, upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, hereby approves the request of the Park and Recreation Commission to allow the installation, that should really say four new pickleball courts at Ballentine Park. That should be corrected to be four, not two, because there's actually four. That's how you, Dan, that's right. You have to have four to play, the four to play the tournaments.
So moved, with four.
With, right. The installation of four, not two, new pickleball courts to be located at Ballentine Park.
Second that motion.
Made and seconded. Any further, any discussion on it? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it carries. Minutes, February 16th, 2023, regular meeting. Can we take this all as one approval? Is there any issue?
I need to abstain from the February 16th. You could take them all and just note that, you know.
Okay.
That fact.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, February 16th, 2023, February 22nd of 2023, and February 23rd of 2023, with Selectmen Bucksbomb abstaining from the February 16th vote?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have our abstention, and it carries. Unfinished business under pool survey and discussion. With that, there's resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves waiving the bid policy and authorizes the hiring of Silver Petroselli and Associates to start preparing the bids and specifications for the Ballentine Plan, Ballentine Pool Project. By approving this, we will get, able to get the bids and specifications started to meet this timeline. But also understood that should it not be voted, should it be voted down at the town meeting, we will have to stop at that point from moving forward. I don't think that's gonna happen, but just be aware of it. But this gets the whole process started, because if we really are on a tight deadline to get this up and running and get the bid specs out, get them returned in time, everybody knows the timeline. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Justin. Any further discussion on the resolution?
So I'll just state for the, for purposes of discussion, that I think this makes sense. So we, just for way of background, we did put out bids to do, to come up with cost estimates on Ballentine. Silver Petroselli was the low bid, and we've been working with them now for, I think, almost a year, as they've helped us with coming up with different scenarios, and then most recently coming up with cost estimates to help us for subsequent bids. So I think it makes sense to continue on with them. They've been there, they understand the project, they know the project, and the timeline works. So under our bid policy, there needs to be some indication in the minutes of our rationale for waiving the bid policy, and I do believe it's in the best interest of the town in this regard, given their experience with the project to date. So that's where we're at. And then the only other thing I'll mention is, they're gonna be doing bid specs, and I'm sure we'll have more discussions as time goes on about that. And there was a public comment about it tonight, and there was extensive discussion at our budget workshop last week about the whole heating element and other portions of specs. And we talked about how we could do add-on packages, like you could bid the project, and then you could bid additional items. And I just think we should be mindful of that and look at that as we go forward and make sure we include those things as we're continuing to gather the costs of maintenance and whatnot of a heating element or other items, so that when we get to, you know, the bid time and actually to send out specs and then to actually look at bids, we can make an informed decision of what should or should not be included in the pool.
To that point, I know there was a comment made about the heating, and I think we all know, probably like to have it heated. But for budgetary purposes and for our capital plan and our reserve account for maintenance, I feel it's really, in order to make a decision on heating, we have to know the full story of cost, which is not just hooking it up. We're gonna get some estimates on what it's gonna cost to run the heater, which could be significant, and that's something we're gonna have to think about. I don't want to just buy a heater and put it in and say, well, holy cow, we can't, you know. Most homeowners will tell you, you start heating your pool, it gets expensive. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying we need that information as a board. Also, I'm understanding from the architect, the cost of maintaining a heater and a heater system is another big expense. So I think before we make decisions on those matters, we really, you know, we've always said, whatever we're doing, we need to really understand what this will mean to the budget and to taking care and doing, you know, the cost of the pool. So I don't know if we're ready to fully develop that until we get that information about what we are recommending, but at least we can get the bids and specs started, and then we can have, get some more information, get it back to the Board of Selectmen about that. Dan, Silver Petroselli's gonna have that pretty soon, I think? The cost of the heating and maintenance?
They actually just emailed 15 minutes ago. They said about $1,900 a year for the cost of the fuel, or what they think it would be to maintain a heater.
Did they say about the maintenance yet?
They didn't say the maintenance, that was just the cost of the...
Okay, so they're gonna, we'll...
Which fuel?
Yeah, I'm gonna say. Dan, didn't you heat a pool?
I guess.
I did.
Was it 1,900 a year?
No, in October, it was $1,900. But we never opened the pool after that long.
Okay. All right, I think we need to...
We're gathering information on this topic.
We have to gather some more information. All right, any other discussion on that? I'll call the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it carries. Next up is the vote on the budget. I just want to say that, obviously, Dan and I worked together to develop this budget, and there was some discussion during the meetings about hauling. We didn't have, we didn't, we had immature numbers of months when we were developing this budget to really know what the hauling, what we could do with the hauling, because we had only been in it for the year a couple of months to make a real analysis. Dan was asked by, I asked him last week to take a look at it. He was able to, I think yesterday, work the numbers. We have had enough months of data. When, now to make a good judgment, we feel is a safe judgment on what we can reduce or possibly reduce in that hauling side. Dan tells me we can do about $50,000 out of the hauling line, right, Dan?
That's correct. I sent everyone on the Board to break down today of how we developed and came up with that number based on July through January of this year. And then we went back and took the percentage difference in tonnage and dollar value. And then we ran the tonnage from February through July of last year to come up with an estimate of what we think the difference would be, and it came to around $10,000.
So I'm pretty confident that we can do that. I will make the motion to reduce the hauling line item by $50,000 per Dan Colton's analysis.
Second.
Seconded by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of reducing that line item by 50,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and it carries. Dan, with that... Dan, with that fifty thousand out, what will our municipal budget be at?
Total, total, total with the school, Jeff, three point nine five.
Three point nine five. It reduced our budget down, Selectmen's budget down to two point.
Two point five one.
Two point five one, Board of Selectmen budget to be sent to, referred to the Board of Finance. Is there anything else in the budget that this Board of Selectmen feel should be changed or worked on? I think it's a pretty responsible number, two point five, and in this economy.
The, the other thing, Jeff, to look at is if, if, if the board wanted to look at the recycling hauling line as well, because there was a slight, we could make a slight adjustment there. The issue with the recycling is that's based on CPI. So although the, the tonnage went down this year, the CPI went up considerably. So if I was looking at that, I wouldn't do anything above, you know, thirteen thousand dollars on that line.
I, I don't even know if we, I think it's better to leave it alone at this point, because who, who knows what that's going to do? And it's not going to move a needle one way or the other. Unless somebody wants to make the motion. So I, I'm not hearing any, so I would entertain a motion to adopt this budget and send it to the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Do we need the num, usually we send a number?
I'm going to, I'm going to send it. If you go in right now, Betsy, you should be able to get it.
Well, Dan does his magic.
On the bottom, the, the total should be two nine oh one, all the way in the bottom.
What they say XL is the greatest invention ever happened? You can run your whole life by XL, you know, it's amazing.
Two two five seven four?
That's it.
Make a motion to approve budget in the amount of.
Five two four, Jason. Two two five two four one nine eight.
Make a motion to approve the budget, municipal budget, in the amount of twenty-two million five hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars, and submit it to the Board of Finance.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Justin has seconded it. Any further discussion on the budget?
And I'll just make a similar comment that I made earlier in the joint meeting, for the public's benefit. This has been a task that's been ongoing for a couple of weeks. We've had a number of meetings here with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Department Heads, comb through the budget, and usually, as we go through that process, we make a, a number of adjustments. And this year, really, the only thing that came out of those meetings was the hauling line. So thank Dan for going, going through that and coming up with those numbers. And, you know, I think it's a, a good budget, especially everything going on in the economy right now, at two and a half percent, and being under four percent combined with Region Fifteen, so I'm happy to support this.
And, and, and just to add, if anyone would like to see, I have, the Finance Director of Region Fifteen dropped off the budget book, it's in my office, if anyone would like to stop by and review it.
Okay. I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, and it carries. New business was pulled from the consent agenda for consideration, the Southbury Republican Town Committee recommendations for appointments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the exception of the recommendations for Strategic Plan Commission to be discussed at a later date.
Second. Made and seconded. Any further comments on the, any further comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and it carries. I think that brings us to the first Selectmen's report. Okay, Planet Conservation and Development, Southbury's plan of conservation development, including the changes that were approved by the Board of Selectmen regarding the PA four ninety, were adopted by the Planning Commission on February twenty-first. The new P O C D will be effective on March first. The complete document will be posted on our website, and a small, small amount of printed copies will be available, available by the end of the week. Human Resources. I'm very excited to announce that our new tax collector, Azra Schultz, started her position earlier this week. Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Schultz's credentials include an MBA in Finance, BS and degree in Accounting. She is a certified Connecticut Municipal Collector with over ten years combined experience in two different municipal tax collector and fiscal offices. If you all please join me in welcoming, welcoming, welcoming her to Town Hall. I have not had a chance to say hello since she's been here, it's been a little crazy in my office, and I'm going to try and get down there tomorrow. And of course, any Selectmen, if you want, stop on into the office, introduce yourself, you're, you know, you're always welcome in Town Hall to come in and say hello. Current job openings, Police Department is currently accepting applications for a full-time emergency dispatcher. In addition, seasonal positions in our Public Works and Parks and Rec Departments are available and have been posted. Our Senior Services Center, I attended the Senior Service Director's reception yesterday. Southbury seniors were excited to meet and welcome our new director, Andrea Kokaran. Senior Center staff did an excellent job of coordinating and hosting this well-attended event. I did not partake in the cake, but it looked delicious. I'm sure that the Senior Center is in good hands with Ms. Kokaran, and we welcome her aboard. It was nice, there was a lot of people there. John, I think you were there, which, so I, I just had to get back. Get, no cake for you either, I know that.
Brought some cake here.
A, a lot of, a lot of people from Town Hall stopped down too, and, and it was nice, it was really nice. Southbury three hundred fifty celebration, March events, Southbury has a Civic Day. Surprise, I've been asked to be there and speak. I encourage members of the board to join us at the Southbury Town Hall from one to three on Saturday, March eleventh, for Civic Day. Our three hundred fiftieth anniversary committee has done a great job organizing this program. And of course, town residents, John and Lynn Dwyer, Lynn is our former Town Clerk, will do a presentation on the topic, How History Impacted Governance, and then I will talk about my perspective on governing through historic challenges such as COVID. The largest natural disaster was the tornado, which was a real stress tester, and COVID has been a extremely long, drawn out. So I'll talk a little bit, I'll have to get my thoughts together on that and what it, what it really took to govern, govern through those times. Special guest, artist David Merrill, who painted at least forty-two murals of Southbury scenery in our town buildings over the course of his lifetime, will provide a tour and discussion of his work. His book will be available for purchase with an opportunity to have your book signed by the artist. Note cards with his design will be available for purchase and proceeds benefiting the historical society. We're, we're pretty fortunate to have the murals done, that David has done, and he's done a lot of other work, both the Ludorf Barn and a number of other things, and he's done work for other towns. Our hats off to David Merrill and, and his accomplishments. There will be tours of Town Hall, including the Town Clerk's Vault, that's very exciting. Where both current Town Clerk, Alice Masano, and previous Town Clerk Lynn Dwyer will be on hand to explain what's inside. It is a pretty interesting thing, and I know my daughter was there helping for a little while, and as an art, she found it very intriguing, the old, old archived information and how it's written and what it is, so it's pretty interesting. Lastly, in the spirit of Civic Day, residents can register to vote, sign up for their interest to be a volunteer in our town commissions and boards, and also future volunteer opportunities for three hundred fiftieth celebration, refreshments will be served, and preregistration is required to attend. We appreciate people letting us know how many may be there. Again, you know, we want to, this is an opportunity for the public who want to possibly volunteer on some, something in Southbury to whatever capacity they can to be there. And the history talk, a history talk titled The Irish in Southbury will be presented on Saturday, March twenty-fifth at one PM at the Southbury Library, no registration is required. The Board of Selectmen have been invited to Jiree Nine, I don't, I think, is everybody familiar with Jiree Nine? They're the manufacturer of electric for plugging your car in. They moved here from Oxford, an open house and grand opening and ribbon cutting on March sixth from one to five PM. You should have received an email from Kevin with information about the event, if the Selectmen could RSVP. Two of our local restaurants were awarded as best in Connecticut in their specialty categories. I, I'm remiss to even mention Laurel Diner again, because it's, I can't get in there. Used to have, yeah, used to be able to get in there and get a seat, you know, now the word is out, I got, you know, it's like, oh my gosh. So on February seventh, Laurel Diner, thelaurealdiner.com, was featured on a spot on WFSB's television news show, Great Day at Nine, honoring their recent designation by Food and Wine Magazine as Connecticut's Best Diner. It's wonderful to see one of Southbury's restaurants get national attention, recognition by such a prestigious magazine. Back in the day, Justin, you and I, when they were, Pete was just starting out with his brother, I don't think, they barely knew how to flip an egg.
Yeah, this is true. And I probably shouldn't tell everybody this, but the trick now is to go very early. My boys and I go at six thirty every, every Thursday, and you can still get in at that point without waiting.
I know.
But it, it's so great for them, and obviously, you and I remember when Alice was there, and there was the pies and everything else, but they've taken it to a, a whole new level, and I congratulate them on their success, it's fantastic.
Yeah. Another local restaurant receiving allocades is Lucas Local Oyster Bar, who received recognition in three categories of Connecticut Magazine's twenty twenty-three Best of Connecticut January Issue. The winning results were based on the magazine's annual reader survey and selections from their panel and experts. They received awards for the best raw bar in the Connecticut, best hidden gem in Hartford County, and statewide runner-up for best seafood restaurant. So Lucas Local, welcome addition to our food scene here in Southbury. Every time my children come home, I make them take me to Happy Hour for more oysters than I should buy. I make them, I let them pick it up, but I like going there. Congratulations to the owners and staff of Laurel Diner, Lucas Local, for the well-deserved awards and for bringing award-winning food to Southbury and the area residents. It's really appreciated, we're, our restaurant scene is becoming very good. I'm looking forward, I believe Vincent from Lucas, Lucas Local is fitting out and getting ready, he couldn't get it done before Christmas, I was hoping to. We did all we could for him to get, it's moved along, but the old chips is going to be an American.
Marty's Pub.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I, if there's not a seat at the diner or at Lucas Local, I don't know, I don't know. But yeah, we go to the restaurants, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people dining in Southbury, and they're not all just from Southbury. So I'm, I'm very, very happy about that. I think next up, that's my report, Justin.
So none of my major committees have met since our last meeting.
Okay. Jason?
Since I wasn't at our, since I wasn't at our last meeting, the last Library Board meeting was the beginning of the month. They meet again next week, so I'll just mention a couple of quick things. They are doing some updating, upgrading the audio system in the Kingsley Room, they approved the gift budget, they're talking about the book sale, there's going to be a donation day in two weeks on March eighteenth, and the sale's going to be the weekend of May fourth to eighth. And then really, the biggest thing that they're involved in right now is their strategic plan update. They've been fairly active in that, they've been having focus groups. And the one thing I just wanted to mention here, that everyone's probably seen in emails and in social media, and there's been others to the other there, is they're doing a survey. So I urge everyone to go take a look at the survey, it's on the town website, it's on the library website, fill it out and help them as they plan for the library's future. LEPC meets next week, EMS is at the end of the month, and the Police Committee continues doing its work, meeting with, what we're currently doing is meeting with departments and towns that have switched over from Resident State Troop Program to Independent Police Force, and there's a meeting next week with East Lawn, so that's ongoing.
There you go.
That's all I have.
John?
Cool. The, let's see, the first one, the Conservation Commission did not meet this last month, so we'll look forward to hearing from them in the month of March. Parks and Rec, there was a little bit of a conversation in the Director's Report about progress being made at Ewald, Ballentine, and Settlers Park by the outside properties team, and creating an inventory of fixtures and features in all the parks that would determine ownership and responsibility for future, future maintenance, so they're getting some work done there. The Community House Restrooms, there's been a cost update and a review of, to determine the cost of fitting out those bathrooms so that they could be restored or renovated and put back into use. And then there was some work on the Park Improvement Fund, how to access it and what projects can be supported with it. So again, just basically keeping good tabs on the parks and, and how we can go about supporting them and taking care of them. Then the Community Relations Task Force met, and I was unable to attend either of these meetings, with our meetings going on here with the Board of Selectmen. But I did hear about Terry Sullivan and Colette Mambo discussed some of their meetings they had with, on February ninth, with Rabbi Polikoff, basically working on trying to encourage some of the faith to be able to join our task force and participate. There was some really nice conversation about cultural connections and with the town's current celebrations such as the, the egg hunt or the holiday tree lighting. And then it was addition, an additional meeting that Colette Mambo talked about, where she attended the Southbury Clergy Association, and then did encourage and was, got some good feedback with some who expressed interest in serving as the clergy representative for the task force. So it looks like they're getting together with a good, strong group of people who will be able to get some good work done. They did recommend Gabby Leonardi as a rising senior to join the Community Relations Task Force to fill one of the empty spaces. And then we had a busy week this week and a busy agenda here, so hopefully we'll get that on next, the next agenda for our Board of Selectmen meeting to actually seat her on, on the task force. Other than that, some, oh, but the other two folks who did submit applications or letters of interest to become this rising senior, Catherine Mambo and Grace Mambo, both did show interest of at least participating with the group and, you know, being a stand-in and, and help out. So it's getting some pretty good interest and some good work being done.
Okay. Holly?
So Region 15 met on February 27. And obviously, the big topic, just like we've been dealing with, is the budget. You can actually view the budget right on the Board of Education website. If you accidentally tap the YouTube video, it'll play automatically as we all just learned, accidentally tapped the, the wrong link. But in there, the link right above that is the actual PDF. It's a 28-page budget presentation from superintendent, from the superintendent. And the budget, it's a 5.95% budget. And you can read through all of that. And just like we've been doing, obviously, they've had lengthy discussions about that as well, as usual, you know, very common that the biggest increase, you know, is, is, is in the staffing. But many, many line items to go through, as we do. But anybody can head over there to take a look at it.
Okay. Not bad. One hour.
Greg, you're my
Oh. I skipped over you, Greg. I'm sorry. I checked the mark before I shut up.
I see what this is.
Moving along.
This one's easy. Energy Task Force met. And I'm really happy to see that they're moving forward with the solar project. They've identified that would benefit the, the electrical cost for the library. It's really focused around the library and some kind of innovative ideas on, on how to make that happen. Two things, it looks like they're moving towards the idea of leasing a roof to, you know, to develop out solar panels and then using the, the, the power that generates to offset the, the cost of power for the library. And I guess some of the legal questions that surround setting up a roof lease. So I've actually leaned on Jason to see if he wouldn't mind fielding some just basic preliminary questions with Chuck and Tom Connor, kind of work out, you know, anything that, that they have questions about. I think more importantly for the board, it's been long overdue that the Energy Task Force presents some stuff to us. And they, they weren't sure, they seemed very timid about, about, you know, that maybe it's too early, we don't want to go too soon. There's plenty of information there that's been worked out over many months on exactly where we're headed. And I just reminded them that we always enjoy, you know, hearing from, you know, the people who volunteer from our town and work so hard on these things. And that we definitely would enjoy, even if, and it's, even if it's preliminary, just to learn more about what, what they've been working on, because they've invested a lot of time in it. So yeah, so I think that you'll be hearing from Chuck to see if he can get on the agenda at some point and make that happen.
Okay. Did I forget anybody else? Sorry. I do that about every meeting, so it's nothing personal. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.